Good evening. Edward Pacula, City Solicitor. I have a PowerPoint presentation, copies of which have been handed out, and we have it on the screen here. And Phil Dromi from Planning will work this. Let me start by saying, we apparently don't call it recreational marijuana anymore. We call it marijuana not medically prescribed.
Is that what Massachusetts is calling it?
Apparently, yes. I did make that up myself. But I just wanted to start there by saying non-medically prescribed marijuana. And the first slide explains the different types of marijuana establishments. And so I guess that's the general category now, is marijuana establishments. And there can be medical, or there can be non-medically prescribed marijuana establishments. And there's going to be licenses from the state for these basic types. A cultivator, it's pretty obvious, the people growing it, the farming. The retailer, which will be selling at retail. Testing facility. And then the fourth is called a product manufacturer. And manufacturer of marijuana products, I think includes edibles. I think it includes anything else that has to do with marijuana manufacturing. But a marijuana establishment can apply for one or all of these licenses. And, you know, the rule was, we're going to do this for, you know, the way we do alcohol. Well, it's not, you know. Alcohol, people come here first and apply, and if we approve, it goes to the state, and then the state goes through their process. And here, the way marijuana works, you go to the state first. And then after the state decides, they'll send it to us to see if it meets us. So it's a little backwards compared to the way alcohol works. But it could be, as I said, for one or all of these licenses. And so we should keep that in mind. Next slide. The next slide, I mentioned the moratorium because this is a little front center right now, and it's been in the news. We had a moratorium. It expired this summer. It doesn't really matter right now, but it will. It's going to matter because the regulations at the state level, there's a deadline for April. And either there are regs there, or there aren't. But after that, these people that have licenses, they can go forward. And how do we put regulations in effect if we don't know what the regulations are going to say until April? And so the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the Attorney General's Office, and in fact up in Amherst, what they're doing is they're putting in moratoriums, and they're having it go through December 31 of 18. That gives plenty of time for the regulations to come out, for everyone to figure out what's going on, to have any sort of planning they want to do. And we could change that to cut it back if everything's in place and time and we don't need all of it. But that's the proposal from the AG that they're giving out to cities and towns, or to towns. We don't have to follow the AG. And that's what Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And so we actually have a draft, and you have a copy of that, because we're recommending that, that you consider putting in a moratorium. As I said, this is what Amherst did too. And as I said, the one we have now expired in August. And what the moratorium would do, it was give us a chance to put in place changes to our zoning law, put in place new ordinances. We got Helen Colton here, who has had some discussions with some of the people at the state level. We have the Cannabis Control Commission, Cannabis Advisory Board, excuse me, is actually meeting tonight here in Springfield. There's two Springfield people on it, Henry Thomas and Ray Berry. And they're meeting at UMass. Their start's at 6:30. So after this, I was going to go down there. I have someone covering that for now. But, you know, we have to work with them. And Helen can speak to that if you can. You've had some conversations?
Helen Colton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services. Congratulations to all councilors who were re-elected. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you. So I've had conversations with those individuals who represent the city of Springfield on the Cannabis Commission. They are wanting to have more local input. And so one of their recommendations will be that we have a local cannabis commission that provides oversight to the city of Springfield. And perhaps, they were concerned about the city of Springfield, but perhaps it will be across the Commonwealth. So there just would not be this advisory board, but there would be more local control and advice around these particular non-medical marijuana sites.
So, again, that's something that we could work into our regulatory scheme that we would be allowed to do. I don't know how that would look. I don't know if that would be a subcommittee of the city council. I don't know if we'd have a separate border commission. But that's the type of thing that we would look into, that a moratorium gives you a chance to do. Next slide. Process for new marijuana establishments. As I said, there really is, this process starts at the state level. But the process that we used when we had the medical marijuana was a two-phased. We had an RFP process. And to determine, you know, that's what we used to try to pick a medical marijuana facility. And we want to have a reasonable and practical approach. It's a new industry in Massachusetts. And we want to gather data. And so what we have said is, let's see how the new one works on Cottage Street when that gets up and running, and gather the data to see what else we should do. But at this point, we're not accepting any sort of additional proposals for registered marijuana dispensaries. And whether we use some sort of selection process in the future would, again, be something we could consider while we have a zoning ordinance in place after the Cannabis Control Commission issues its regulations. Next one. Under the new marijuana law, there's really five areas that give you local control. The first are basically called time, place, and manner regulations. And those we could pass ordinances. Some might be general ordinances from this body, or they might be zoning ordinances for the establishment process. We might be able to utilize either one. And that's where maybe we want to have a local commission look into establishing some sort of body that has some controls there, or, again, as I said, a subcommittee. We can limit the number of marijuana establishments, but there's restrictions, and I'll go into that in a minute. The third type of restriction is restrictions on cultivation, processing, or manufacturing that is a public nuisance. So that's a separate category. And as I said, that might be something that we want to have, maybe our Public Health Council weigh in on. We may want to do something in our zoning ordinance. We may want to have this, a new commission. The fourth are reasonable restrictions on signage. That is a little bit of an unknown because the law on signs, unless you're restricting their size, their sort of lighting aspects, there's not a lot you can do about signs. Because if you've got to read it to make a determination about a regulation, the new case Reed v. Gilbert from the Supreme Court says that's content-based, and we can't regulate the content. We can only regulate the time, place, and manner of signs. And then the fifth, we may want to have established some penalties. State laws grant us some power to grant penalties. Next slide. So under the time, place, and manner, again, we cannot prevent a medical marijuana dispensary from basically getting into the non-medical marijuana business. Under the law, they're protected, and they're going to be able to get into this business.
Is that a question?
Yes.
So hand-to-hand facility, they can operate as a recreational site as of right now?
Not recreational site, as a non-medical dispensary.
If they were to open their doors because they are a medical facility, they can still operate under those guidelines?
Correct.
As of right now?
Right. No, when the regulations come out. Correct. But the law's written to say the first 75 licenses in the state go to those who are, quote, "engaged" in this type of business already. And by engaged, that means they have a provisional license from DPH.
So automatically, they would be granted that license?
Yeah.
That's happening?
Yeah.
Hand-to-hand?
Yeah, the one we voted on.
Right. Next slide. As required limiting, so let me talk about that for a minute. Springfield voted citywide to approve the -- so we cannot limit unless we have some new vote citywide. And these are the areas, if we want to -- and you'll see, some of these are going forward. You know, Long Meadow has taken a vote to prohibit, but they hadn't already prohibited it. So, but they can ban it if they want by having a vote. Limiting the number of marijuana retailers to fewer than 20% of the number of licenses that sell retail alcoholic, basically the number of package stores. That's another way to limit.
And so I looked into that one. The number is seven, if we were to do that. So in Springfield, it would be seven. Seven.
No more than seven?
No more than seven.
That's helpful data to have. Thank you. Because that puts it in context.
Is it municipality? You mean there's 35 package stores?
Yes, because it goes by actual package stores. And so 20% of the actual number of package stores in the city is seven.
So what, that's --
In the city is seven.
So there must be 35 package stores probably, right? So then, the third type of limitation is limiting the number of any type of marijuana to fewer than the number of medical marijuana registered. And again, we'd need a citywide vote for any of those. Public nuisance is the next slide. And just, you know, very briefly, oh, we've got a continuation on limiting. Excuse me. All right. In Springfield, the majority adopted, the vote was 30,000 to 22,000 roughly, back in November of '16. And therefore, the only way we can place the limitations that I just described is by having a question put on the ballot. This body has the power to put questions on the ballot. If someone comes forward and says, "We want the question on the ballot," and this body says, "No," they will have to basically follow the local referendum process to get the signatures and the time allotted to get it on the ballot.
What would that vote be for? Ostensibly, I know we're not decided.
Adopting any of the limitations from the last slide, saying that we don't want to have any, we want to ban it, that we want to have only seven pursuant to the next type of regulation, or the third one limiting.
Can we just enact that here? We have to put it back in the referendum?
Correct.
Even if we just went 35 to seven, that's still going on the referendum?
Next slide, public nuisance. So during the moratorium, what we'd want to do is our zoning regulation is come up with a special permit type of provision in the zoning ordinance. And the new law has some very specific things. It takes the typical zoning ordinance special permit process, and it adds some language. It says, "No special permit condition can unreasonably be impracticable or in conflict with the statute." In other words, you can't use a special permit to ban these places. You can only put conditions that are reasonable. Now, that may mean that, you know, some people might operate, but that's likely an area of litigation, of someone's going to say, "You're adding special permit conditions that put me out of business." And I just bring that to your attention, that during the moratorium, we should try to come up with a zoning ordinance that has special permit provisions, and maybe list some of the types of conditions that, you know, you'd want to put in place. Next slide. Civil penalties, as, again, maybe we want to have some general ordinances that this is what state law allows us to do, to have ordinances as to personal cultivation, as to, you know, personal possession of certain amounts, and public consumption is prohibited, or in a motor vehicle, if you're possessing it there. Kind of like open container type of law. And then a person that cultivates more than six but less than 12, or who possesses more than an ounce, not more than two, outside of his or her residence, could get a civil penalty of $100.
I've got another question.
Yeah.
Possession of it in a motor vehicle. Would it, somebody leaving from an establishment to take it home?
I think it's like an open, it's like an open container thing. When you're going to buy it in a facility.
You can't have it sealed or whatever it is that could be found. I just wanted to make sure that, because some of the stuff I share with people and, you know.
Yeah.
All right.
I know.
Does it specifically say in that, whatever the language is, that if they're actually smoking it, they'll get the OUI?
Yes, because it's, that's public consumption. And you're smoking it in a motor, so, but you cannot, just because it's legal, doesn't allow you to smoke it in public.
Right, right, right.
Like drinking?
Huh? Just like, that's why I said, it's like an open container law. Right.
If it's lit, you get $500. If it's not lit, you're good.
I'm just saying. Well, and, you know, another interesting issue that's going to be unique to us is the casino. So with the casino, the laws prohibit smoking, you know. So you're not going to be able to buy it and go into the casino and smoke. Nope, nope. And the, if you go out to Vegas, you know, marijuana's now legal there. But, again, the law is very strict. You can't go into your hotel room and smoke it. It only is allowed in private residences. But...
Does that also apply to people who are using medical?
Edibles. No, no, no. In Massachusetts, that's different. But...
If I have medical marijuana, I can smoke it anyplace, right?
I don't think you can smoke it where there's no smoking.
I don't think I can smoke it in care.
Yeah. If there's no smoking allowed, you can't. But, you know, there's going to be people, the laws right now on, like, workplace, so we have drug laws about drug testing, and then we have people who have medical marijuana. And there's some recent cases where, you know, that have made it not clear how that's going to work. So the case that just came down, there was a woman who had medical marijuana, went to her employer before she took the job and said, "I have medical marijuana." And the employer said, "No problem." Then she tested positive, they fired her, and the court said, "Look, we're not saying you can't have rules, and we're not answering that question, and you probably can, but in this case, this lady came to you before she even, and you knew, and you said, 'Fine.'" And she, so they said, so she at least can go forward with her case. Now, so in other words, the motion to dismiss had been reversed. That doesn't mean she's going to win her case, because if the employer ends up saying, "Look," she, and I'm making this up, she's a truck driver, and you have to have a CDL. And under the CDL, if you've got a positive drug test, you're not going to get a CDL license. Well, that's different, you know. So that's an area that's up in the air, and there's going to be litigation over those kinds of things. We're going to see that.
I had just one question.
Yes.
Going back to, I know you have to finish.
Uh huh, that's fine.
It has to do with the types of marijuana establishments.
Uh huh.
What if somebody could, I know that there's, like, certain businesses in different places that have, like, kind of like cafes, because we had touched on where you can smoke, where you can't smoke. So I know we have some hookah lounges that have opened up. Not saying that they're marijuana lounges, they're hookah lounges. But is that something that we can create an ordinance on to control those types of businesses?
That's the type of thing that we expect is going to come out in the regulations, because as it is right now, you can't smoke in public.
Right, right.
So you shouldn't have any establishments that have a little cafe where you can go and smoke. So we expect some clarification of what's going to be there.
Absolutely.
But as it is right now, no.
They can sell, but their patients or their customers can't consume at their establishment.
On premises.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. All right, thank you.
When regulations come down, you have rental properties and public housing.
When you say any, no regulations have come down. We're waiting for them to come down. But there are laws about prohibiting smoking in rental units, so I would assume they would apply.
That's how I have, I've had to deal with it, because I'm a property manager, is that regardless of if it was, like, medicinal, with some of my guys, I tell them, "You can't smoke on the property anyway, so just try not to smoke inside of the property." When it comes to, you know, like MRVP contracts with federal guidelines and stuff like that, because they can still kind of swoop in, and it's a mess between that.
It is. And, but, again, if you don't have it in your rental agreement, or your lease, you're probably not going to be able to enforce it. But if you've got it, so the people are applying for a place, and you've put a rental agreement, no smoking allowed, that's probably enforceable.
That's where I got, I, it's on my side, because I had to take people to court for that. So it's just the whole, no smoking entirely. Not necessarily it's tobacco.
Correct. Next one. So here is one, the adoption of the local tax. We can impose a sales tax that will be added to the state's sales tax, not exceeding 2% of the total price. And we wouldn't be collecting it, it would be collected by the state when it's sold, and then the state would be sending it to us on a periodic basis.
So in terms of a timetable, Attorney Pacula, when would it be appropriate for us to consider the sales tax? Should we be talking about this, should we be thinking about putting forward legislation now, or do we have to wait for any?
No, you can do it now. I don't know how much data there is out there, and that's something I could check on with DOR to see if they have any idea of, like, what types of, how much revenue would be raised, or, you know, whether, you know, should it be 1% or 2%? You know, and if you, you know, I don't know the answers from a, you know, I can give you the legal aspects, but there's revenue aspects that maybe we could have finance or DOR chime in on. But legally, you could do it now.
Would you be able to, if you can look into it, that would be great, if you could give me some data on revenue. I think it would be appropriate for us to start thinking about whether, what percentage we want to make it, and bring forward some legislation.
Okay.
The sooner the better.
Sure.
Now, there is a state tax.
Sales tax is 5% right now? So this, it would be like 7%. It'd be 5 plus 2.
Two locally.
That's the most.
So if an ounce of weed is $20, you got to put 7% on top of $20.
Right.
Oh, my God.
But what is suggested?
$20, I know that sounds weird.
Is not the regular 5% it would be.
I can't hear you.
Isn't it accurate that they suggested that the, whatever the tax would be, it wouldn't be just the same as the regular commercial tax, a 5% plus 2% for a community, or whatever the community wanted to do? So essentially, the state, like, I'm anticipating, say the state says it's 20%, it's going to be the tax for sale of marijuana, or would it be, because I know the states, marijuana's not the same as...
No, this is a sales tax. So it's going to, you can add 2% to the sales tax. So if it's 5%, it's 7. If it's 20%,
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, is that, I mean, so the only thing that this body could give consideration to is whether or not we wanted to add up to 2%.
Zero, or 2, or something in between.
But whatever the tax is going to be established, which is probably not going to be 5%, it's probably going to be double-digit, we would be adding 0 to 2% on whatever the state decides, if it be our will.
That's what I'm going to look into and try to get financed to get us the data, so that, because I don't know the answers.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes.
An actual commissioner, thank you for joining us. So the other day, I was running down Newberry Street and taking a left onto Carew, and there's a new business on the corner of Newberry and Carew called The Smoke Shop. So I put on my investigative hat, and I went in and pretended to be a potential customer. Apparently, I fit the bill, so they, you know, I'm trying to ask if they had anything in there to sell me that they weren't supposed to be selling. Fortunately, I am happy to report that they weren't selling anything that I can share with you that I know they weren't supposed to be selling. With that said, they did have some synthetics and some alternatives, as it was explained to me, to marijuana that were for sale. So I asked if any of them contained THC, none of them did. But some of them contained CBD. And they were selling gummy worms and gummy bears and a few other products that, to me, seemed to be targeting a certain demographic of young people. And I asked about the effects of this drug, and I was told that it would have the same physical effect on my body as would THC, particularly if I wasn't a heavy marijuana smoker. I've never smoked marijuana in my life. And so I didn't purchase it, but I absorbed the information in anticipation of tonight's meeting, and I'm wondering if we can have any insights into what that substance is, and if it is legally regulated, and what we can do to make sure that they're not selling those THC alternatives in gummy bear form.
So I can give you a little insight in that, and maybe the commissioner could do more. But essentially, the CBD oils are legal. Now, that doesn't mean they're legal at the federal level.
CBD?
CBD. I think it stands for, yeah, cannabinoid, cannabinoids, cannabinoids.
What does it talk?
Cannabinoid. It's like for, it's...
It's hemp oil.
Hemp oil.
That's what it is. It's hemp oil.
It's a different part of the marijuana that's not THC, THC that, what THC does. That's specifically more than what this would use.
So...
When you're speaking on the, what does THC?
THC gets you high.
Ah.
So, for example, where we have spotted places selling what might be marijuana-related products. products. We have done some undercover buys, probably similar to what you did. And we've done some testing, drug testing. And we send them to the lab and they have come back negative. We did have one that had come back positive because, but the person said, "No, no, no, we don't, we don't sell anything that is THC. These are all just hemp oil." But one, we came back, came back positive. And we went back to them and said, "Hey." And they said, "We are immediately dropping that vendor. We are not taking anything else from them and, you know, because that's not legal."
Do we have the ability to regulate that substance? Even though it may be legal at the state level and illegal at the federal level?
I'm not sure. I can check. And I would, it sounds like you have really two questions based on what you'd said before, and that is regulating the substance or regulating the marketing of it. So like you said, you call them gummy worms or something that might be attracted to children that have this substance. And so that is something that will probably be in the regulations and is again, an area that we won't know until the regulations come out. And that's another reason to have a moratorium. So we will have the time to put something in place.
Can you regulate the potency here?
I'm not familiar of how the potency works for hemp oil.
Tell me a stupid question.
No, no, the only stupid question when you don't ask, so ask away. I'm here. And like I said, that's, this is how, you know, I'm learning too.
So, Mr. President, I know we're coming up against the end of this meeting time here, but Mr. Solicitor, if you could just, in the course of the next few weeks or months, report back as to whether or not we have the legal authority to regulate the substance and/or the marketing of it. That would be of interest to me, because, you know, they're sort of cornering the market before it exists.
I added it to there. Next slide is the last one, and it talks about host community agreements. There are provisions that allow for host community agreements in the new act, but there are also limitations on host community agreements. So for example, there has to be a reasonable relation between the impact fees charged by the host community agreement and costs to the host community agreement. And in no event can we get more than 3% of gross sales and in no event can we get it for longer than five years. So those, that's what the new law says, and that's what we're dealing with. So that's the end of the presentation. I've got some good stuff, if anyone else has any other stuff that I could go and back and research and bring back to this body.
So we, just a time check, we have four minutes into our regular meeting. We have two people signed up for public speak-out, so if we have questions, are there any other questions for the council?
Thank you.
Attorney Pakula, I actually have, just wanted to make sure, our next step, according to this presentation, is to extend the moratorium?
I believe so. And Phil Dromi can talk about that, because that requires some planning board action as well, some publication.
In your package is a proposed draft of the moratorium language. I would just write that up as a petition that would, again, start the process to put the moratorium in place.
Okay.
Again, the big issue is when you, you know, April 1st is really the date that they start accepting applications. March 15, I think, is the date they're supposed to have the regulations completed, so.
So will your, will your department submit it for the next hearings meeting?
Well, I'll start the process. It still then, it triggers a planning board hearing and then it would ultimately come back to you guys.
Okay.
So it probably won't get to you just for timing-wise until January, because it still has to go to the planning board first.
All right. And then one more question for Attorney Pakula. After the moratorium, you said, "Local commission, that's an option, that's not a requirement."
Correct. That is something that I learned of today from Commissioner Carlton, who indicated the Cannabis Advisory Board is recommending and would like to see some local commissions to help them do their job.
And so this body has the authority to establish through ordinance that commission?
I believe so. I'm, as I said, I'm going to learn more about that, but as long as we're, it fits in those five categories, I should say four categories, yes.
Okay. And then finally, my last question is in terms of the, limiting the amount of establishments. You said we only have three options. I like the second option in terms of matching it to the amount of package store licenses. And so as we begin to talk about the sales tax, and I said that I would like to bring this forward, the sooner the better, that would have to be, this one would have to be a referendum.
Correct. So there, timing-wise, we might want to look when we have elections coming up and do it jointly with that.
Okay.
You know, worst-case scenario, we've got elections next fall.
Next fall, yep.
And we could put something together to go on that. But if we've got something, and I'll talk with Gladys Oyola to see what the election schedule's like between now and then.
Okay.
And put, for your consideration.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, that concludes our committee of the whole meeting. We have two people signed up for public speak-out. The first person signed up is Rhonda Latney.
Good afternoon, city council members. I'd like to begin, I'd like to thank my creators for their many blessings. Once again, I'm here regarding the MGM, and I'll wait till everybody's ready so they can hear what I'm saying. Because I think it's rude that my city council members are engaged in the conversation and I'm here talking. So I'll wait for them. Thank you for your time. I know I'm just a taxpayer and I doesn't, I don't matter.
Matter.
So I don't matter. But anyway, I'm here tonight again regarding your MGM casino. And I'm here to touch base on the MGM Springfield won't face financial penalties. I have a letter written back in Sunday, April 20th. I'll wait for Mr. Ramos. Because you're not going to disrespect me and talk over me. I listen to you. As a taxpayer, I would like my city council members in place to listen to what I have to say. So I'm here tonight regarding MGM Springfield won't face financial penalty for the market rate apartments. I have a letter that was written by Ms. Vera O'Connor, who was a advocate for the casino. And she wrote the article back in Sunday, April 20th, 2017. It states, "If MGM is granted the casino license, we here in Springfield will hold their feet to the fire to make sure they live up to the host community of agreement." And I'm here tonight because your actions have shown that you have not held MGM to the host community agreement, especially relating to this 54 market rate apartments. And I would like to discuss the fact of some of the comments that was made by city council members. One in particular, when Ms. Walsh stated in reply to the question, "Do you think the city of Springfield was cheated out of a financial penalty by extending this deadline at all?" And Ms. Walsh replied, "No, I do not." I believe that if the city residents realized the amount of money at stake was $11.5 million, that they would be upset over that. Because as we're looking for money in the cities, that $11.5 million would have done a lot for us. Ms. Walsh went on to say that the vote to extend the 54 market rate apartments was unanimous. But I know for certain that Mr. Shea and Mr. Fenton, at the time of the vote, he wasn't present. And that's interesting considering Mr. Fenton, you are head of the casino oversight community and that you understood the amount of money at place with the penalties of MGM not meeting the host community agreement, because of the conversation you had with City Pakula, Steve, what's his name, Steph, Steph, the MGM lawyer, Stephen Stratton, and the historical preservation over the fact that they had the debate that they should not pay those $64,000 a day penalties, because it was the historic preservation's fault for the delay. And so that's interesting that you would not be there for that vote. Mr. Ramos, concerning the fact if MGM was in default of it, MGM was absolutely in default of that host community agreement. Because in the newspaper article, it stated that MGM was supposed to start August 30th to develop those market rate apartments. Back in May 10th, 2017, Seth Stratton, the lawyer for MGM, stated, "Three years, three months before they were supposed to start the production of those 32 units, that MGM did not secure financial backing for those apartments." So it was not if there was a breach of contract of the host community agreement, they were. But you once again failed the city. You gave them the extension and they lost $11.5 million. And now you're here saying that MGM is going to give you $11 million to invest in that apartments on Elm Street, that same $11 million that the city would have received if you did not give them that extension for the host community agreement. And so then you're saying that they're going to.
Ma'am, if you could just wrap it up, please.
30 minutes. Well, you took time away from me because you were talking.
Your three minutes are up. You timed your three minutes.
So you took away, you want us to invest $30 million without looking at the amount of interest on that? And the necessary length of time it's going to take taxpayers to pay that debt off? Where's the money coming from? Because if MGM is only given $11 million and if they could not get a, secure a financial back and for, financial back, backing for the development, how are you going to do that? And at whose expense? As taxpayers, so our taxes go up? This whole MGM has been broadcasted in the newspaper.
All right, three minutes is up.
And on the website, how you have failed the city awfully. And I'm talking because, though you may be uncomfortable.
Excuse me, ma'am.
But I know that I'm watching, that I'm always watching. And you have failed the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Tanya Pitts. You have three minutes to address the council. Tanya Pitts. All right. That concludes our public speak-out. We will start our regular meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Present. Present.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Here. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs.
Present.
Present. Counselor Shea, absent. Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams, absent. Counselor Ramos.
Present.
The counselors and our guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin tonight's meeting, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, recognize, and congratulate Counselor-elect Jesse Letterman and Counselor-elect Timothy Ryan. I'd also like to invite you to join us inside of the rail. We have an agenda provided for you, and Counselor Twigs will be escorting you.
Nice job, Eric.
Counselor Allen.
I have a report of two finance committee meetings, which occurred last Wednesday. And I guess I would just ask you, I will report on the committee meetings, but they are talking about bond authorizations that are on tonight's agenda, so maybe we want to go right into that. It's up to you how you want to do that. The first meeting last Wednesday, the finance committee met. Counselor Twigs was there, Counselor-elect Letterman, Counselor-elect Ryan, and myself. I hope I'm not missing anybody else. And that meeting was to go over the agenda items on tonight's agenda. At the time, there were five bond payments, five bond requests. The one for police cruisers was pulled off the agenda, so that left us with four. At the time of that meeting, we approved all the grants that were on the, on our committee meeting. All the grants were approved. And one of the bonds was approved. That bond being the one for the food service facility for the school department, which I believe Superintendent Warwick is here to talk to us about tonight. At that time, we did not approve, probably because of my, for reasons of my own, did not approve the other three bonds, which were the Riverfront Park Bond, the Roads and Sidewalks Bond, and the Heavy Equipment Bond. And the reason we didn't is because we did not have this one-page budget, which you will all find on your placemat, this one-pager, little blue stripe. At the time of the finance committee meeting, we didn't have this. Now we have it. And I'd just like to point everybody to it. This is in request to, in response to my request, that we have a look at the next four, five, four years, this year plus four years, on how the line codes look. And before we approve bonds, that you're going to increase our debt, how do things look? And I guess I would point you to two particular line items on here. One is the pension line item, which we've all been in fear of. And I will talk about the pension finance committee meeting in a second. But if you look here, 2018 pension payment is 34 million plus. Then next year, it's 39, then 42, then 45, then 49 million in 2022. That's what we have been in fear of with the 14% increases and then the 8% increases. What this shows us, I'm sure there's some risk analysis we could do, but what this shows us is the finance committee, finance department, has looked forward four years and showed us that even with the pension payment each year going up, that they are comfortable. Caffo, TJ Plant, was at the meeting, is not here tonight, but Lindsay, Lindsay is here and Pat Burns is here. And they could help with answering any questions about this. Once I saw this and saw that, over the five-year plan, that we were accommodating the pension payment. And if you look at the debt service, which is two lines above pension, it shows us a 27 million this year, it goes to 30, then back to 29, 27, 24. That number incorporates the bonds that are on tonight's agenda. It does not incorporate any other bonds, like for a new school that we want to build or something. They're not, that debt is not in there. But the debt that we are asked to vote on tonight is in there. So when I saw this, and if you look down at the bottom, you can see the bottom line shows the casino revenue starting to come in, 8 million this year, and then 17 and 16 million, million across the line. So, and then in the black stripe at the bottom, it shows what we are kind of unfunded, you know, what our problem is, is TJ says every year, there's an amount that we have to try to solve for. And that's the number there, 11 million, then 21, then 29, then 39. So this doesn't mean it's perfect, but he was not intimidated by that amount. And so as a result of that, I did make a motion at the meeting a couple, a couple hours ago, the general government meeting, to approve in that meeting, not the finance committee, but I am thinking that these bonds are okay from a financial standpoint. Everybody else has to decide whether they agree or whether everything else is right about it. But I didn't want to approve them in the finance committee without this information. And I was satisfied with this information, which is from Lindsay. Obviously, it's high level, but it does show us that they're thinking about, and have thought about and considered as we knew. But on paper, we can see that while the, but the pension payment, by the way, in 17, it was 30 million. So over a matter of five years, it goes from basically 30 million a year to 50 million. And that's a daunting number, but this is showing that with the, with the help of the MGM revenue, et cetera, that we are able to do that. So that. So that was the first finance committee meeting. The second finance committee meeting was on the pension plan, a pension liability. And again, the same people were there, including many members of the finance team, including two members of the retirement board, Bob, I can't remember his last name, and Tom Scanlon. Bob?
Moynihan.
Moynihan, and, and Tom Scanlon. We had maybe 14 people in the meeting, and we went through the liability. Counselor Twigs was there. We, we know we have a daunting problem, and we know there may be some alternatives that we could consider at some point to make the problem less. But as it stands, at that point, we, we had a good discussion about what, what is facing us, and the fact that at this point, our plan of attack is to pay the increasing payments e, each year, and, and that, as, as is noted on this. I'm not saying that's the final strategy. That is what the CAFO TJ Plant prefers. And you all have to make your own decisions as to whether you want to approve these bonds tonight. I'm not, but at any rate, I am feeling much more comfortable having this in my hand about the bonds. So those are my two committee reports.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before we get into more committee reports, there is a request to take item number 16 out of order. And so without objection, Mr. Clerk, item number 16.
Item number 16 is in order to approve a five-year lease for copiers.
Counselors, this is for two of our high-speed printers, our color and our black and white that the city has had for probably the last 20 years. We're very fortunate to get an opportunity with the lease rates lowered and some of the competition out there, to get brand-new machines. And in the first six months, we're going to be saving about $17,000. And over the life of the lease, we're going to be saving about $1,300 a month compared to what we've been paying. So I thought it was a good opportunity to jump at this and see if we can get it approved.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, every time I see you come to the podium, I know it's going to be good news. Because I, seriously, I know how diligent you are in your department, and how hard you work to find the best deal for the city of Springfield. And was it only a couple of years ago where you saved the city? You and Andy saved the city all that money?
Yeah. Well, that was with, conjunction with TJ Plant. But yeah, we did save going to the in-house payroll and moving some other things in-house.
Well, thank you for doing such a good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none. All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
On approving the order, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook, absent. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash, absent. Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay, absent. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams, absent. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. When there's sufficient, order is approved.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Back to our regular agenda. Are there any other reports of committee? Counsel Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. On October 24th, the economic development and maintenance development, we had a meeting, a joint meeting to talk about the CPA needs. But unfortunately, I sit on both, I sit on both committees, so I got to at least hear Bob McCarron out. My colleague, Chairwoman Caterie Walsh, was away in Boston, couldn't get back on the bus. She was out supporting the High Speed, High Speed Rail with Senator Eric Lesser. Bob McCarron, the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, gave a brief overview of the CPC to the date. The CPC has been meeting with the different entities throughout the city and locations around the city. They held one public hearing to the date to solicit public input. During some of these meetings and the following needs were heard. He met with Pat Sullivan with Parks and Recreation. Pat gave him a list of eight to 10 small parks that could not make the master list of, for upgrades, that could use funding for the CPA. Ken Chafee, Conservative Commission, stated that the need for revising conservative trails, so there is no ATV access. The need to, to remove evasive species from taking over conservative land was also mentioned. It's this plant that came over many moons before us that has been spreading like wildfire all over our, our communities. It's a Japanese something. I, I don't know what it is, but we have to, you know, get a handle on this. It's all over the Pioneer Valley. So that was mentioned also. Also, they, the need to, oh, I'm sorry. They met with Jerry McCaffery from, from Housing. She would like to see more incentives for first-time home buyers and more funding for two-to-three-family rehabs. Since you've seen in the past that there was something that happened at Maple Hill and at Memorial Square, that there was some incentives that were given out to make clean entry through a grant. So she also, I, I know I've, aside from everybody else, that wanted to wonder, how can we help out some of our people here in the city with, that own two-to-three-family houses? So that was a, something else that came up when it came to the CPC funding. And then the Pres, uh, the Preservation Trust Board of Directors compiled the list of vacant and historic buildings in need of repairs and occupied historic homes that need repairs also. And Food Policy Council would like to see more community gardens. Mr. McCarron also stated that the Assessors' Office is predicting that this first year, they would collect somewhere around the 705, uh, 705,000, excuse me. And the voters will have a chance to vote again in five years, whether to continue the CPA or not. But I believe now moving forward, so we could have more of a, I have asked the, the president to have, because we, we had a commu, a committee of a whole meeting behind medicinal marijuana. But before the year's out, I believe it's important, so for all of our communities and all of the counselors on award level, to get their input and meet with, with Bob McCarron and the rest of the committees, to really see what are the needs, so that we can give them a, a good report, so they can go back and assess it. So for the most part, I'm really excited for this program. But also, at the same time, I, I would like to see a little bit more input from the rest of my colleagues, so we can, you know, once the, the money comes in, once we, it gets vetted, we can, you know, move forward on these projects.
Thank you, counselor. And just on that point, just wanted to make sure that everyone knows, I did schedule a committee of the whole meeting on that topic for the 27th of this month, prior to our hearings meeting. And so I'm hopeful that everyone will make an effort to attend. As we know, the city council has to approve the funds that are generated through the Community Preservation Act. And so the Community Preservation Commission asked to meet with the city council to talk about what the priorities are. And so it, it should be a great meeting. All in favor of accepting the, the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. The General Government Committee, in conjunction with the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee, met earlier today. The first issue that was discussed was a DPW bond for sidewalk construction. And I know a number of my colleagues have been adamant in terms of their requests for, for Chris, to see if we could set aside some funds for sidewalks to be improved. And Caterie, I know you were, you were pretty vocal on this issue as well. So we were excited to find out that 2.5 million dollar bond has been allotted for sidewalk work, and it's not just going to solely be in the CDBG areas. So I think this is long overdue, and the committee voted unanimously for the council to approve it. In addition, we had the appropriation of bond funds for vehicle purchases from the DPW, and that too was voted upon unanimously. And then finally, the last item, we revised the ordinance for plowing snow into the public way. And so the general idea was that, was that we wanted to try and prevent these private contractors who were plowing private property from pushing the snow from those businesses into the public ways, that in many instances had, had just been cleared, thereby making it a safety hazard. And so what we did, there was no specification in terms of the amount of the fine, and so that everything could be uniform and everyone could be on the same page, DPW as well as the, the police department. We increased, or we, we set a fine for $100 for the, for the first offense, 200 for the second offense, and $300 for the third offense. The final issue that came before us, we didn't retake conclusion, which was increasing the fines for vehicles who are parked illegally during a snowstorm. And so we'll continue to debate on that issue in subcommittee, and hopefully we'll have something before you very soon.
All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any other, other reports of committee? Seeing none. Counsel Walsh.
Yeah, I do not have a report of committee, but I, I do notice that our superintendent of schools is here. And it has been our practice when we have department heads, and particularly, he's really more than a department head, he's the head of the whole school department. I think as a courtesy, we should take up his issues.
If there's no objection, we will take, uh-
I think there's two. 17? 17 and 21, I think.
Which items are there, Mr. Superintendent?
17, 21, and 25.
17, 21, and 25, Mr. Clerk.
Item 17, in order approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Food Service Director and the City of Holyoke.
Thank you. This, this is an agreement that we've put forward so that Tim Gray from our Food Service Department, working for Pat Roach, would actually work part-time for Holyoke, helping their Food Service Division as well. Holyoke's had some difficulty with their Food Service operation, and Holyoke would pay that portion of a salary. We'd let Holyoke use them for 15 hours a week. They have a, an agreement with SEDEXO, like we do, when they're trying to proceed with SEDEXO to improve their lunch program, in the same pattern that we've improved ours. So we set this for, so we could, we could help Holyoke, and we've organized Tim's work so he can still get what he needs to get done for us on our side. And Holyoke would pay the salary for that portion, for the 15 hours a week.
Any questions from the council?
So it's an intergovernmental agreement.
Is that an unusual thing to do?
Very unusual, but we happen to have the same food service vendor, and we've made a lot of improvements in our program, and the state is pushing Holyoke to try to make those improvements. So they asked us if we could work with Holyoke to help them improve their program. But we, you know, we have some other items on our food service program that we're doing that are very unique, and Holyoke is trying to do the same thing. And the state is pushing the breakfast in the classroom, and all the things we've done to improve our food service program for our kids. So it'd be no cost to us, because they'd be reimbursing us that section of the salary.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none. This is a financial order, subject to two votes under Rule 19. All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Roll call.
On approving the agreement, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook, absent. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash, absent. Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay, absent. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams, absent. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. When there's sufficient, order is approved.
Next item is, is it item 21?
Right.
Item 21 is a bond authorization for a food service building, Phase 2.
So this is a, do you want to speak to that?
So this is a bond authorization for the second phase of the food service building, 7.5 million dollars. And if you have any project-specific questions, we have a couple of people who can answer
Counsel Allen.
Uh, thanks, Mr. President. I, I think the feature here, you may recall, Counselor Twigs was at the Finance Committee meeting with me last week and a, and a couple other Counselor-elect. This is the project that we were all excited about last year, about providing healthy food and growing our own food and all that sort of thing. This is part two. We, I think we approved 7 million last year and 7.5 this year, or 7.5 is asked for tonight. And it's, it's got some tremendous features to it, on the nutrition side, on the self, self-sufficiency side, if you will, but also on the financial side, in that the 7.5 million, correct me if I'm wrong, that we would bond for, we would be reimbursed fully by the school department for the cost of that bond. So it's a net zero to the city. And I, I just want to say that, we had a robust discussion at the, at the Finance Committee meeting about it. I hope I'm representing it correctly.
That's correct. Yep.
And I defer, I would just ask you guys to elaborate, if I, if anybody has any more questions.
Yeah, so, um, oh, so I was just going to say that, yeah, you're correct, Counsel Allen. We would be reimbursed by the school department from, from the food service account, their food service account, the cost of the bond to the city. So the annualized bond costs.
Counsel Twigs.
Mr. President, this is a program that I was very, very much impressed with, suggested that we do some outreach to ensure that the full city is aware of what is happening at our school apartment. Now, this is a new state-of-the-art facility that would teach culinary art, in addition to providing breakfast and lunch to students from pre to high school. In addition, those students that are involved in extracurricular activities can also be fed. But also, there are families that are poor, like me, who can get a backpack of food to take home for the weekend. I said, now this is amazing. Makes me want to go back to school, you know? But the commissioner, superintendent should be congratulated for, for the forethought that they gave to developing this program. Now, we started in a rented facility, I think of about 16,000 square feet, and now we're at, what, 70,000 square feet?
56.
56.
56. And we're owning it. And it's not going to cost us a dime, because the money that is made is coming right back to the school department. Now, our understanding is that we grow a lot of food, we send it, send it to Rhode Island, they're packaging it up and send it back to us. Now, we're going to be able to do all of that stuff in-house. I'm very, very impressed with this. And I think, I think it was suggested that they would make available for council members to go in and see this facility. It's quite a place for us to review. And so I wholeheartedly support it and hope you will also.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you.
All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the bond, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook, absent. Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash, absent. Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay, absent. Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams, absent. Counsel Ramos.
Yes. When there's sufficient, order is approved.
The last item for the school department is a special act asking for 100% charter school reimbursement.
Number what?
That is number 25.
Right now, the city pays 47 million dollars towards charter school reimbursement every year. The state is supposed to reimburse the city a certain percent of that. They've never fully funded that. It's, it's actually in the law, but it's subject to funding. So they're shorting us, they give us about seven, they gave us 7 million dollars this year.
Seven.
Seven out of the 47. But they're responsible for giving us 13. So other cities like Lowell have asked them to fully fund the charter reimbursement, which would bring in another 6 million dollars to the city of Springfield. In addition to this with the charter schools, on the transportation side, every time a charter school comes into the city, it's a citywide busing piece. There's over 4 million dollars of transportation costs that are driven off charter schools that, again, are not reimbursed to the city of Springfield.
The school department paid for it.
The, the city on the transportation side, but we, we get the big hit on the budget side, yeah. So this is very unfair, because their own law, they haven't funded. So this is very unfair, because their own law, they haven't funded. And it really is unfair to the urban centers that typically have a lot of students in charter schools. So they should fully fund their own law. And that's what other cities have executed a petition on, and we're suggesting we do in Springfield as well.
Counsel Twigs.
Mr. Superintendent, at one point, didn't they fund us on the basis of per pupil? Didn't they give us X amount of dollars per pupil as in the regular schools?
Yeah, originally started with a per pupil funding that, you know, the Chapter Seventy funding. So they'd give us the per pupil for a year, and then it would decline every year, the amount of reimbursement. The problem is, if you take a few students out of a school, all your costs in running that school really stay the same.
Stay the same, yeah.
And you really don't, you know, lose any cost centers that way. So the whole charter school reimbursement piece, the charter schools never should have been funded based on costs from the sending district. It's a poor funding formula overall. Given how poor a funding formula it is, it's absolutely ridiculous that they don't give the reimbursement that exists in the law.
Yes.
Yeah.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Superintendent, I know you said other cities and towns probably are going to file the same.
I think Lowell already filed, yeah.
So I have a sense that this will pass tonight. What will happen then? I mean, is there someone that's going to champion this for you and bring it forward?
You know, we'll bring it forward through the Mass Association of School Committees and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. We have pretty good lobbies statewide, and we'll bring it forward to the legislature to ensure they fully fund the law that there already is on the books.
So you don't necessarily need a sponsor in the legislative delegation to run with it?
I suppose we could always use help.
Yeah.
Catering, absolutely. So if you have some ideas on that, we'd be glad to take the help.
So I know, I saw you several times during this week, and you did mention that there are two hundred new students coming in.
We've already taken, I believe, two hundred and seventy-five new students in from Puerto Rico. And there's more every day, new students since October first with the situation of tragedy that has been endured in Puerto Rico. So, and we expect to receive several new students. So we're also appealing to the state to give us the reimbursement for those students. Because the way the state funds education is, if a student isn't in before October first, a student coming in before October first, you get funding the next year. So if a student comes in October fifteenth, you have to wait two years to get the funding for those students. So the governor's talking now, and the state associations have put forward that we should do emergency funding and give us the appropriation to educate these kids, because a lot of the youngsters require, you know, a lot of ELL services and everything that are very expensive.
Yeah, because that's, and talking about food, that's probably two hundred new kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're going to need a lot more.
Yeah. And we're enrolling fifteen to twenty, like, each day now. So it's really going to be a tremendous burden with our current financial construct.
Thank you.
To provide the proper services.
Oh, already that many?
Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Presuming this passes tonight, could we forward this to our delegation? Senator, you know, the senators and representatives so that we get some advocacy from them as well on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the special act, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook, absent Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash, absent Counsel Twigs. Yes, Counsel Shay, absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams, absent Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
One is sufficient, special act is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to our regular agenda. Item number one, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is the June Revenues versus Expenditures Report. This item has been in committee since the last regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was sent to committee at the October sixteenth meeting. Counsel Allen had requested a report, which I provided for him this evening, and I believe he's shared it with the council.
If I could just speak to the president. You guys should all find like a five-page stapled report on your desks. And what it is, is showing, the reason we put this in committee was just so that we use the year-end report, which is the June report, as an informative way of looking at how have we done the last few years? How's the budget increasing, et cetera? So I asked Pat to put together kind of a composite report. Well, he'll walk you through it. And also, if you look at the, you know, the first page shows the four years. You can compare them side by side. And then after that, you see six thirty, seventeen, then sixteen, then fifteen, then fourteen. So I defer to Pat to explain it, if you have any questions. But this is the information that allows us to look at the year-end and how our year has compared to previous years. Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. This is a four-year comparison showing the city's end result expenditures, revenue less expenditures. As you can see, we have ended the year with a surplus each of the last four years. It's important to note that the surplus is about one percent of the budget in the best year. So the budget is still very tight. The free cash certification will be done by the Department of Revenue in January. We're hoping to have that figure late January, early February.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number two is the September Revenues versus Expenditures Report.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This is the first quarter of fiscal year 2018. And as you can see, we are running a deficit, which is driven mostly by a large debt payment that we made in August and our pension payment, which was made July first. This is the normal ebbs and flows of the budget this time of year. It's comparable to past fiscal years.
Any questions or comments from the council? All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Items three through eight are reports and recommendations from the Board of Public Works. Items three through seven are for the installation of electric transmission facilities on Morgan Street, Armory Street, Corondo Drive, Signal Hill Road, and Union Street. Item number eight is for the installation of fiber optic conduit on the area of Main Street. The recommendation from the Board of Public Works is to approve all of these petitions.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Not to parrot with what Clerk Wilson just stated, the first five projects are ever sourced all in support of new building projects in the city or redundancy. And the Comcast one is, excuse me, a new service to the Ganderas Center off of Main Street.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting items three through eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you, councilors.
Item number nine is a three million dollar grant for the Swan Pond Culvert.
Good evening, councilors. As you may have heard, the culvert had collapsed under the main greeting road of Forest Park. We had petitioned the Commonwealth of Mass to release the three million dollars in their open space bond. And they, the governor released that roughly three weeks ago. So we're happy to report that we will be going out for design services and hopefully start construction next spring. And at this time, there's no match required by the city of Springfield.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Item number ten is a land and water conservation fund grant in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars.
This is a federal grant that we just received. It's going to replace the playground equipment at Van Horn Park, build a small pavilion where they start the child road races and some landscape improvements in that area of the park.
Any questions or comments from the council? All in favor of, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
I'm here for twelve and eighteen as well, counsel.
Without objection, twelve and eighteen.
Item number twelve is an FY sixteen, FY seventeen, FY eighteen Community Foundation grant in the amount of one hundred, four thousand, four thousand, five hundred dollars.
This is through the Community Foundation of Western Mass. It's a private fund that went with Old First Church. And we just went through a three-year review of the expenses, and they were happy to see what we've been doing for the maintenance on the church since the city purchased it. So they are now releasing these funds.
Counsel Allen.
Pat, does that pay for all the maintenance over there? Or was it specially designated for certain things?
It was just designated for the church portion, if you will, of the property. So what we hope to do is do a design study with some of these funds to put a capital plan together for the property.
Do you know how much?
Try to go for like federal historic funds.
Do you know how much money is set aside? And we're getting a hundred.
It's in the millions.
Excuse me?
It's in the millions, so we get a percentage of that each year.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Did you say item fourteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Item number eighteen is a bond authorization for the Riverfront Park redevelopment in the amount of one point six million dollars.
Good evening. Lindsay Hackett, Budget Director, Tamarack Jive in Springfield. So this is a request to authorize bonds, excuse me, my throat, for one point six million dollars of a three million dollar project. One million dollars is a contribution by MGM for Riverfront Park. We're in the process of trying to secure... Is the four hundred, is the grant secured?
Four hundred, yeah, the PRC grant, we're going to hear in another week or so.
Okay. So we're in the process of trying to secure another grant for four hundred thousand, which requires a match, which this one point six million dollars will be that match and then the additional cost to complete the project. And if you have any project-specific questions, I have Pete and Pat here.
Counsel Twigs. You can, you can speak into the microphone so the people at home can hear.
We're going to link the park into the State Street corridor and bring everyone in from the State Street entrance. We have a fountain there. The second, second board is showing us the fountain. The fountain will be lit up at night. It will be used as a water fountain during the day, a playscape. So there's a bunch of different aspects in this. We have the lawn, Festival Garden lawn, and we're redoing. A lot of electrical work. If you go there during any functions, it's put together with extension cords. We're bringing it up to code. So that's about four hundred thousand dollars worth of electrical work to bring it up to code. We are working within, with the Army Corps of Engineers. We've got to use a lot of permeable stuff that we wouldn't usually use in a park so the water will filter through and go back into the river. The playscape has a rubberized surface. That's about a hundred thousand dollars worth of rubberized surface. It's a specialty surface that we have to use. It's permeable. So again, getting the water through. So we're trying to drag all of State Street in with the kiosks, the updated kiosk down there, so there'll be a police presence, cameras, and opening up, I think they're going to be opening up the bikeway all the way to the north end shortly. So this will draw everyone in from the north end right into downtown Springfield. You definitely would like it. That's part of your life.
One other question that I'd raise, Mr. President, is it's admirable to know that we're going to replace something with a walkway and bike path. But I want to know what they're doing for security and view of what happened in the government basically, kind of following people taking advantage of the public.
Yeah, there'll be no vehicle access. It'll be gated off to any vehicular, yep, traffic. So that'll be gated off, and park departments will be the only ones with the keys. And they'll be opening and closing the gates as necessary for maintenance, food trucks, stuff like that. So it'll be regulated. There'll be no vehicle access down there. You'll be entering from State Street, and there's also an underpass further down towards the Memorial Bridge. Yeah. There's a handicap accessible.
So where is State and all that stuff?
Stage is down at Festival Field. So we're expanding that so it can go both ways.
So we don't need another Festival Field here as well?
Okay. So can we anticipate that MGM is going to be doing a program there? Do you have any dollars?
Yeah, so you've got two point six.
Right. We got... We have three. We have one point six for this bond, four hundred from the state, and one million from... And one million.
We're looking at three maybe, right?
Correct.
Now, and how is this going to be used on a daily basis? What's going to draw me there other than that public enrollment?
Well, it is in the downtown, so lunch programs, food trucks, stuff like that. I think MGM will try to push people in there if you're at some event and you want to go out for a walk. I think that's what we're going to try to do, is bring the bikes down there so the bike path is used. There's a lot of people down there. We have the kiosks, like I said. We're going to have the police states, one of the police kiosks down there. So that'll be open twenty-four, seven. Well, just the food trucks. There's a couple little spots for them there. You could either be out West Columbus Avenue or within, within that area. That's a picnic area. So we're setting up the electrical that where we could accommodate them in both places.
Counsel Gomez, then Counsel Williams.
What's the estimated time that this project would take?
We can go out the bit as early as another month, and then we'll be starting in the spring. And we're not going to be done for July fourth. We're going to be done sometime in, you know, September, October timeframe.
All right. So a little bit after, when MGM opens its doors, the Riverfront will be accessible. I also, is there any kind of conversation behind a place where we can bring boating down to the Riverfront Park instead of keeping it at Bassett Boats where Pioneer Valley Row Club is?
Yeah, we have the North Riverfront Park that's accommodating the boats. I don't think there's enough water in this area to accommodate the boats.
All right. So we're going to reconnect the walkway. You said that you guys are putting electricity for hypothetical food trucks to be able to be stationed inside the truck. But within the ordinance, we've already delegated, designated the area outside of the park, yes?
Yes.
So you're going to put electricity so some of these trucks can be able to... Moving forward, because we have to, there's a sunset clause. We have to, you know, reestablish that, right?
For events, it would be special events. It wouldn't be, you know, everyday kind of thing.
Like, like the Fourth of July festival that we have and whatever else.
Or Thunderbird Thursday, or Wednesday, or whatever.
I understand. Also, there, aside from the one kiosk that you're putting in, Counsel Twigs had mentioned about security and moving into that we're having a twenty-four-hour establishment that's going to be right across. There's probably going to be more people, maybe, wanting to walk on this Riverfront. Can we look into probably, you know, those, they have them on... can we look into probably, you know, those, they have them on college campuses?
Call boxes?
Call boxes, along the route, kind of lit up, something, so people can feel safe, and that goes directly to the kiosk, or directly to the police station?
We have those incorporated into the plan, I think there's three of them right now.
There's three of them incorporated in the plan, I like that, I love that.
And the cameras, I think, will be very helpful as well.
Alright, so we have cameras, call boxes, alright, so, yeah, fine, so, no kind of boating or anything for the near future at Riverfront Park at all? We're not bringing nobody from the park into the water, we're gonna keep that at North Riverfront Park?
Not in this phase.
Alright, but, had to ask.
Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pat, just wondering, in terms of the construction, now I know that you said that this is to begin next spring, to, it lasts, the duration of the summer to the fall.
Correct.
Just in terms of construction, I'm just thinking, because those are the peak hours, or the peak times for mobile food truck operators to be, to be using this space, so is there any plans around, or maybe accommodating food trucks, because, I mean, in the essence of all of that, a construction that is to be taking place during that time, or?
Try to accommodate them and schedule our work around their schedule, and try to get portions of it completed, and turn it over, so we can use it at an appropriate time.
Okay, I'm quite sure we'll be talking more about that maybe in the subcommittee meeting, but also in terms of bringing some of the folks along the State Street and Main Street corridors to the Riverfront Park, is there any additional signage planned outside of the park?
Echo Dev has a whole signage plan, I think they have a location of 56 signs, and some of those are incorporated into this project as well.
That's great, thank you.
We've been working with them.
Alright, thank you.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking, excuse me, I'm looking at the drawing, and I wanna know, where's the flag? Where's the flag gonna go?
We have a flag, we have a big flag, we have, actually, I didn't mention the 9/11 memorial, and the flag is incorporated into the 9/11 memorial. We're working with Spirit of Springfield for getting the memorial down there, we have it incorporated in our drawings, a lighting scheme for it at night, I didn't print that one, but I probably should've, it's, it's cool.
Well, the reason I ask is because I know the Bicentennial Committee, when they were dispersing their funds, made a contribution for a very, very large flag.
But they're aware of it?
Yeah.
How big is it gonna be?
I think it's 15,000 dollars, so I'm assuming it's gonna be somewhere in the 60-foot range.
Good, okay, thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just on the financial side here, I just have to ask this question, I don't really have a big problem, but originally, we heard of the MGM million dollars, and last week, when some of us saw this, we kinda like hesitated and said, gee, we thought this project was a million dollars, because that's, the MGM money was a million, and then we heard about the other 400,000 that was coming from, I don't remember the source, you guys know?
State.
State, okay, so that left 1.6. Did we operate, try to operate within the 1.4, or what was your constraint when you were designing it? Was it, was there a fiscal number you had in mind? Because, you know, last week, we kinda did a little hesitation on this, that there was gonna be more bond money needed for this.
This is the complete master plan, we were, thought about doing it in different phases, but it would've cost a lot more to do it in different phases, so we're moving, we're trying to move forward with implementing the master plan. The 9/11 memorials was part of the Phase 1, the fountain, and the rest of it was part of Phase 2 and 3. The electrical component, when we went down there and looked around, we needed to upgrade it, it hasn't been upgraded in over 40 years, so we're trying to incorporate the whole master plan into this $3 million.
So what was kind of in your mind of a multi-phase, two-phase project or something? Once you looked at it deeper, it really made more sense as a one-phase?
Absolutely.
And that's what, that's why we're trying to do everything? So the number didn't go up that much, but the timeframe?
Correct.
So you're trying to do everything at once?
It makes complete sense, we'll have one contractor in, it'll be done for the next 50 years, or hopefully 50 years, 40 years anyway.
How long has it been since we invested in Riverfront Park?
1976.
1976?
Before you were born.
Maybe for some people in here, not for me.
Counselor Edwards. Guess it's due an upgrade.
Great project, I guess, and I'm assuming from what you're suggesting, but was there an, is there an opportunity for the public to comment on these plans? Because it is such a big part of the revitalization of downtown, we're getting these plans, we're, but is the public gonna have an opportunity to vet these, or make suggestions on any of this?
We've had the neighborhood meeting, and the Park Commission has weighed in on it as well, so we've been reaching out to the people around that area.
Okay.
Finally...
Counsel Twigs.
Where's parking? Where do handicap people park?
There's parking on the other si, we have parking on the West Columbus Avenue area right here, right by the kiosk.
Oh, that where the old train station?
Correct.
The active booth was?
Correct.
And so, I'm, I'm a little back...
That's gonna be all upgraded as well.
I'm a little backwards on that, can you turn that around again?
Sorry.
Now, where's West Columbus Avenue? Where's East Columbus Avenue? Well, this seem like this is in the city, where the heck is this?
It's the Riverfront Park, there's the river.
So technically, it's really like that, huh?
Well, technically, it's like this. There's a little behind it, does that help you?
No, this helped, this helped me more from where I'm sitting. From where I'm sitting at City Hall, I'm looking...
Drive into the river.
So, I saw that parking and stuff down here that's not being used.
Right down there.
Well, right down there. So where do we buy the tickets for the old train station? Remember the tickets we used, the ticket hut?
That's gonna be the police kiosk.
That's what I thought, but I just wanna know where it is, so I can get a sense.
Sure, right here, there's State Street.
Here's your new Riverfront Park. I've been waiting for you guys to do something over there, I can go swimming.
Gonna have to hire a lifeguard for Henry.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
The bulldozer for Henry.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna ask Counsel Hurst to step up. I do wanna speak on this item, Counsel Hurst. Counsel Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've been, I've been thinking about this 1.6 million dollar bond, since I saw it on the agenda when it came out last week, and I listened to everything that was said tonight, and I like the proposal, I like the project, I'm not so certain that I like the price tag. And I'll explain why, is, I mean, when you put it into context, there are other parks in the city of Springfield that are in need of repair, and $1.6 million, or $3 million, because it's the final price tag, it's gonna be $3 million. Can you envision, can you imagine what we can do with $3 million to all of our parks across the city? How many times have we stood here and heard from the Ward 1 councillor about the conditions of Canafick Park, and the repairs that are needed there? We've heard my colleague Counsel Williams talk about the park on Wilbham Road.
Adams.
Adams Park?
Yeah.
And the conditions there, and the need for repairs there. And still, we keep talking about these things, but we're not bonding to fix those parks. I've been talking about the need to have a place for safe swimming in Indian Orchard for years, since I got elected, since before I got elected, and Indian Orchard still doesn't have a space for safe swimming. And so, I'm pretty certain that if we had a $3 million budget, we could find a place for the kids in Indian Orchard to swim safely. And so, I'm not against this project in particular, I just think that we need more information about what is, what the overall plan is for our parks in the city of Springfield. We're not talking about big budget items when Counsel Williams talks about the slide or the playground that needs to be repaired, you know, that's not something that's gonna cost millions of dollars, that's, that's a small ticket item.
$20,000, $30,000, yeah.
Just a few thousand dollars. And so, do we have an overall plan for our parks in the city? That's what I would like to know. I think that we have to do, I would like to see a priority list, I would like to see what our plans are for the future of our parks, I'd love to see if we're even thinking about finding a way to provide the Indian Orchard residents with safe swimming, is that something on the priority list? All those things, and so, if this goes to a vote tonight, I'm gonna suggest that this go to committee, so that we can have a more in-depth conversation about this, I don't, I don't see that there's an urgency for this. But if it's the will of the council to put it to a vote tonight, that's fine, I'm more inclined to vote against it, because I would like to have more information on our overall plan, but again, it's just, you know, the will of the council. Did you?
Sure, good comments, Counselor. What I, I like to look at this as a grant, basically, 1.4, or close to half the money is coming through MGM, and eventually through the Commonwealth of Mass, so it's similar to what we just passed earlier for Van Horn Park, and we work very hard, we probably get three to four park grants a year, and then we use the CDBG funding, so you're correct, we use a lot of outside resources to maintain and to repair our parks, and if it wasn't for these grants or gifts, we wouldn't be as far as along. As Counselor Gomez stated earlier, we've been working very hard with all the neighborhood councils over the past six months, since the community preservation account was passed by the residents, and we've put probably, I'd say we're up to 12 neighborhoods that we worked with plans, because they're gonna start releasing, hopefully in the spring, an application process, so we've been very diligent in working with them. And then lastly, yes, we do have a plan in two locations, one, we have our capital plan, which has all the parks and the things that the council has stated over the last three to four years in that plan, and then we also just got approved by the Commonwealth of Mass our open space plan, which lists all of our parks and the priorities and what the needs of those parks are. So we have plans, happy to share them, but this is no different than a grant, and thank God for MGM, if they didn't give us the million, we probably wouldn't even be talking about Riverfront tonight, so it's, they started this process with that generous gift, and we're using that to leverage a state grant, and then now the city, so these are, this is like a 50/50 grant, if you will.
Counselor, I'm sorry.
Just one more question, Mr. President, and so, would we have been able to move forward with this project without the 1.6 million dollar bond? I mean, I'm sure that there's, there are sufficient improvements that we can make with the $1 million that we're getting from MGM, and then the 400,000 like grant.
We were gonna do Phase 1, it's, we basically, we've put a three-phase plan together, so we're doing Phase 1 and 2, Phase 3 won't be happening as part of this money, that's roughly another million dollars, we're crunching those numbers as we speak and looking for other grants. So, as Mr. Garvey just indicated, if we waited, it would cost you maybe another 300,000 to 400,000 if we were to implement Phase 2 at a later date, so it just made perfect sense to get Phase 1 and 2, it's basically on that boundary of the railroad track to the river, and it just makes good sense to do this, and again, because of the money from the MGM, and then you've got a potential grant coming from the state, it just made sense to do Phase 1 and 2 at this time. So I think it's fiscally responsible to spend the city monies now, and it's been since, basically, the Bicentennial Committee is who built the park, and I think Counsel Walsh's husband was part of that committee, and that's why they turned the $15,000 over towards the flagpole, they had some proceeds done, left over, so that's where the flagpole money's coming from. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you for that answer, Mr. President, I'm still, I'm still leaning towards voting, voting this down, not because I'm against the project, but because I think that there are other parks that need improvement, that we can certainly be able to cover with 1.6 million dollars, and so, again, I would, I would prefer that this go to committee to have further conversations about our overall plan for our parks, but if it's the will of the council to vote tonight, I'm hopeful that Chairman Walsh will consider holding a subcommittee meeting on this topic, and we can have a further conversation of, about what is our plan for our parks in the city of Springfield.
Is that, are you making a motion, Counselor Ramos, to send it to committee?
I'll defer it to my colleagues.
Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President, I certainly don't mind having a meeting on the plans for the park and what's been going on, but I, I'd like to speak in defense of our parks, I think that we've done outstanding work in many parts of the city on, on the parks, and just went to a wonderful opening of a park in memory of Gunnery Sergeant Thomas Sullivan, but I am against sending this to committee, but, and I hope my colleagues agree, I don't think there's any sense to delay this, especially if it's not gonna, you're not gonna finish the work till after the MGM opens, so you're gonna be, be nice, it could've been before, you'll delay it even further, but no matter the outcome of the vote, I'd be happy to have that meeting, but I hope we do not vote this down.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President, I just wanna point out, there's nine of us here, that's what you need for a financial order to pass, so one no vote puts, this won't pass tonight, so we have four people out, so we need 100% everybody who's here to pass, I just, that's a mathematical statement only, just telling you.
Counselor Gomez.
To delay this.
Followed by Counselor Twigs.
I echo the frustration of Counselor Orlando Ramos, but I also see, I see the other, the other side of, this is, you know, a bond. Also, earlier, you heard me state that we're gonna have a community, a committee of a whole meeting, talking about parks and what's the plan. Fortunately, with our residents, last year, we voted in a CPA, we have a CPC that will, that wants to meet with us, and that's why it's important for all of us to be at this meeting, because then the parks that are all of in our districts, we need to advocate for them, and then our neighborhood boards to fill out those applications, to be able to, you know, because a lot of these parks don't get on the capital improvement plan, and I understand, 1.6 million dollars is a lot, a lot of money, and I have my own frustrations when it comes to the parks, and, you know, and it's not just in the north end, it's not in Mason Square, our sons play baseball together, and we went to Nathan Bill, and we've sat there, and we talked about it, Mr. President and myself, talked about, you know, what's the, what's going on when it comes to our parks, you know, do we even, are they even fully staffed? You know, and that's some of the frustrations, on the weekends, when we take out permits, and we want people to permit our parks, is there somebody holding the people accountable that permitted there? We don't have nobody on on the weekend, there's a lot of challenges here, but fact of the matter is, like, this is money that's on the table now, our colleague has stated that there's only nine of us, I believe that, you know, with, withholding a meeting, withholding a meeting, you know, at a subcommittee level, I think it would benefit, and strengthen, and bring more, more minds to the table, with the minds that aren't here today, some of our colleagues that are not with us, but honestly, if Mr. President, or Counselor Orlando Ramos was to vote no, then it's back to the drawing board, and we have to figure this thing out, and I don't think, I'm ready to risk 1.6 million dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Twigs, followed by Counsel Adwards.
Mr. President, I've listened diligently, all of the comments that have been made with respect to the Riverfront, and I think they're all legitimate questions, certainly the question that was raised by President Ramos is a legitimate one. I would ask if he would defer voting against this, and let me ask the Park Commissioner if he would provide us with a complete up-to-date list on what they're doing with all of our parks.
Sure.
And, and then let us go to, to the committee, if we wanna have input in terms of upgrading those, then we can do so there, but I would ask that we not delay this project. Now, remember, this is a bond issue, they gotta go out and sell, sell whatever they They got to go out and sell, whatever they sell, you know, for the bond, and then they got to do the doggone work. Let's not prohibit work to go forward. Let's do the right thing tonight and pass this, because there's been a lot of discussion in committee on this, finance committee. And so, I would ask that we, if we can get the information from the park commissioner relative to all of the parks, then we can look at that as an entire issue. Please, let us not hold this up.
Counselor Edwards.
I think that the fact that we have nine people and there is, we haven't heard from every councilor here, and it may not be appropriate for counselors to state what their intended vote is before it comes up. But with nine people and the risk that one counselor may choose not to, the prudent thing may be to send this to committee. This can be back within a couple of weeks with a committee meeting held, and that may alleviate the concern, and it also may afford us the opportunity to have our other three colleagues in-house that would ensure its passage. Do we really want to take a chance that one counselor, or maybe, he may not stand alone. There may be other councils who haven't spoken tonight who agree that there should be a committee or may have concerns. So, I'm of the suggestion that the most prudent thing to do is to send this to committee, allow it to come back up on the next regular scheduled meeting and not risk it not going through, because all his concerns are legitimate. I have, I'm pretty sure, and I know we've had assurances, that all the information necessary is available to us, but do we want to risk this? We've had this situation come up recently with other, with a contract where just having the wrong number of people can affect whether something is passed or not. So, do, I'm just going to throw that out there, that this is not something that's terribly new to this committee, not having enough attendance to ensure an item being put forth passing.
Counselor Williams, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me just ask, would a delay in sending this to subcommittee significantly impact the projected timeline?
We can't put it out for public bid unless the funds are in the account, so it could add another month or two to the overall project, which puts us now into October, November for a completion date. So, I would just like to, I've been 30 years with the city, and to all these counselors and Counselor Ramos, we've had a good working relationship. So, I never steer away from a question or providing information. So, you have my word that I will provide the information you've requested tonight, and I know I've been working with Counselor Gomez on a lot of these issues over the past year, year and a half that have been brought up. So, I think we will continue to work in the right direction to, I'll come to that same conclusion of improving resources for our parks across the city. So, I hope that my answer gives you some confidence to vote in favor of this tonight.
I would just echo, ideally, hopefully, Counselor Ramos, you have the, kind of the last word on this, just in terms of your thoughts on sending this to committee or taking a vote tonight based on what your colleagues have said tonight. But I will also echo the same sentiments that many of my colleagues shared in the sense that I don't believe that a delay in this is ideal. It's not ideal for the opening of MGM. It's not ideal for some of the mobile food truck operators that I've spoken to recently who plan on actually using that space to be vendors. I think that we should not be holding hostage the Riverfront Park, which is, again, going to be kind of a central location to those patrons, those new patrons that we get to the city. And we sure, I don't want to have cooked park when we have the opportunity now to kind of seal the deal. So, again, that's where I stand on it, and I would hope that Counselor Ramos changes his ideas on that as well.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, there's been a lot of really great points here tonight. If we do send it to committee, I think some of the most eloquent testimony tonight was given by Counselor Edwards. I share his perspective. So, if we do approve this going to committee, I would hope that the body would acquiesce to suspending the rules and allowing it to be on our meeting on the 27th. So, would be just a two-week delay, and I think there'll be some good conversations in the meantime. It'll save us any potential upset tonight.
Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, I'm going to, I'm going to ask that, I'm going to make a motion to committee, and the reason why, first of all, I'm going to commit to putting this on the agenda so that there's no delay on for the 27th, and hopefully, we can meet in the committee before then. And I really, I really don't want to have to do this, but I can't go back to my constituents in Indian Orchard and say that I just voted to approve $1.6 million for the renovation of Riverfront when our parks are in need of renovation and repair. And so, I can't in good conscience vote for this tonight. It isn't anything against you. You do a great job. I appreciate all the work that you do, but I have constituents that I have to answer to, and I can't support this tonight, Mr. President. So, I'm going to make a motion to send this to committee with the commitment of bringing it, put it on the agenda for later this month.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Call a question.
Counselor Walsh.
Well, I have a question. Counselor Ramos, don't you think some of the constituents in Indian Orchard will enjoy Riverfront Park? I mean, this is almost like blackmail. If you, if we don't, if we don't support a small park in Indian Orchard, you know, the whole idea on the city council is to make a vote that's the best for the entire
The entire city.
I don't think that's being done here tonight, and I think everybody in the city will be happy. I mean, the casino passed with a vote, and the city will be happy to see that there's a Riverfront Park that is a little bit safer than it is now with more access. And, you know, as the chairman of maintenance and development, it is my sense that people are happy with our parks and that when questions are brought up, they are addressed. I don't feel it's right to hold hostage a plan that benefits the entire city for one area of the city, because if they wanted to, they could address the park commission, they could bring it forward. No one's ever asked me to address that as chairman of maintenance and development, and I think we should look for what's best for the entire city with a vote tonight.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to add a little spin to it. The casino opens, I believe, September 8th. This is looking at an October date now. If you go much later with a weather situation, who's to say that the weather would be conducive to opening the park at all next year if it gets pushed out to November? I think of the betterments that we're doing on Main Street to make, to complement the MGM development, and it seems to me that this will ultimately pass, and we will ultimately have a plan that Pat Sullivan will present to the Maintenance and Development Committee. I would say that as good partners with MGM, who are spending a million dollars on this, you know, we're opening a $950 million facility a block away, that it seems to me, prudent to me, that we would vote for this tonight and still do those other things. We all seem committed to that. Pat has presented it to us, and MGM has got a million bucks on the line here, which they are not withdrawing if we don't vote on it tonight, but how about a vote of confidence that this is something, and maybe if we get it done and these guys can accelerate a little, maybe it can open shortly after the casino opens, and we have, you know, the betterments in place, not just on the streets, but also in the parks. Thank you.
There's Counselor Ramos.
The question, please.
On the motion, on the motion, Mr. President, I just wanted to make it clear that I started off talking about the need for repair in our parks across the city, and it wasn't specific to Indian Orchard. I mentioned Indian Orchard as one of those areas in the city where we need park renovation. And then my second point is that I don't want to have to vote against this tonight, which is why I made the motion to committee, because I'm not prepared to vote for it. I want it to pass. I want, I want Riverfront to be renovated. I want that to happen. However, and that's the reason why I made a motion to committee. We're not delaying this by a year or even a month. We're delaying this by two weeks. Two weeks in just in order to have a conversation, allow the other counselors, the other four counselors who are not here to weigh in on this important conversation, and then we go from there. You know, I don't, I just don't want to have to, I don't want to have to vote against this tonight. That's why I made the motion to committee.
Counselor Twigs.
Mr. President, I call for, I'm going to move the question. I just want to say this. I don't see anybody here with a gun to my head telling me how to vote. The information that has been provided is encouraging me how to vote. Now, I heard the president, as he spoke elegantly about this, a lesson, I play games here. You're talking about Indian Orchard. You're not talking about McKnight. I speak for McKnight, but I know what's in the best interest of this city is for us to move this project. You take a vote on sending it to committee, it will not pass, and what happens? Let's take a vote to move this forward, please.
There's a motion on the floor.
Mr. President, may I please, just one quick reminder once again.
Counselor Edwards.
The risk is that this does not pass. We saw that happen with the deputy fire contract. We did not have the numbers. It failed 6 to 6. Do we really want to take a chance over a two-week argument and not, I mean, I'm voting, I'm very happy to vote for this, but unless the motion is withdrawn and the second is withdrawn, we risk this not passing. I don't, I haven't heard anybody but one person suggest that they might not vote for this. So, the thing is, do we really want to risk that? Because we've seen it happen in the past. So, the best, and I'm going to say the same word, be the third time I think it's been said, prudent. The most prudent thing for us to do today is for this to go to committee and allow the conversation and all the information to be given, and then regardless of how my colleague chooses to vote in the future, you have the possibility that the three individuals who are not present today are the ones who can either sway it, or the information that you give my colleague addresses his concerns, and the issue goes forward with a two-day delay, or we kill it here. And we, and I don't think MGM is going to not provide the money at some other future time, but that's the risk we're taking. So, we can keep calling for a move to question, but if it's, if the motion is not withdrawn and the person chooses to vote against it, it dies.
Then that is that person who's killing it.
Excuse me, Counselor Twigs. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by Counselor Gomez.
And I've called for the motion.
And you called for a motion to move the questions. All those in favor of moving the questions, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. There's a motion on the floor to send it to committee, seconded by Counselor Gomez. All those in favor of sending this to committee, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
No.
What about the other vote? No? I don't want to be recorded as being against this.
All right, next item on the agenda, Mr. President, I mean, Mr. Clerk.
You didn't say all of them.
The next item on the agenda is a...
Were you going to withdraw the motion?
He moved the question, so it doesn't matter what I was going to do.
I don't know why they didn't, I can ask you.
Ellen, how much more you got?
Counselor Allen has asked for a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
How many yeses do I need?
Excuse me, Mr. Clerk, what am I voting on right now?
On sending the bond authorization to committee. This is the bond authorization for Riverfront Park. Counselor Edwards, a yes vote is to send it to committee, a no vote keeps the item before the body.
And how many votes do you need for committee?
It's going to need 51% of the, majority of the members who are present in the, who are present at the court. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
No.
No. Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
No.
No. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs.
No.
No. Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams, absent. Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
The ayes have it. This will be sent to the Maintenance and Development Committee.
No, it's a majority, it's got to get seven votes, doesn't it?
Majority of the members present.
Does this automatically go to the...
This would go, this will be placed on the, well, my understanding from the conversation is that this is going to be on the agenda for the hearings meeting on the 27th of this month.
Well, a hearing meeting?
We've suspended the...
Correct.
27th?
Yes.
The item will be sent to the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee, and will be on the agenda for the 27th. Thank you.
The next item is a grant for the homeless, is a Health and Human Services homeless grant increase of $190,978.
Good evening, councilors. Helen Carlton Harris here to ask you to approve $190,978 for our access to mental health grant. This is a grant for health services for the homeless to assure mental health services are provided to our clients and patients.
Any questions from the council? All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do you have any other items on the agenda?
I am here for elder affairs as well, and that item is 13.
Item 13 is the FY18 GSSI grant in the amount of $92,400.
This is Greater Springfield Senior Services. They fund two outreach positions for the Department of Elder Affairs. This is the annual grant.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, is this state increase or decrease of the last fiscal year?
This is level funded. It funds two positions.
Two positions for outreach?
That would be correct.
Okay, and that entails those individuals going to the different senior centers throughout the city of Springfield for what services?
It entails us doing outreach to assure that seniors are connected to the services that they need. So, there are a number of service. There are the health need services there, as well as looking at the new senior center and making sure we're doing concrete outreach to assure that our seniors have the ability to access concrete services there as well.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Items number 14 and 15, Mr. Clerk.
Items 14 and 15. Item 14 is the Early Childhood Resource Grant in the amount of $27,999. Item 15 is the FY18 Massachusetts Cultural Council Grant in the amount of $11,300.
All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 19 is a bond authorization for roads and sidewalks in the amount of $2.5 million.
What about 15? What did we do, 15?
16?
Oh, we did 14 and 15. We did 16.
Oh, we did them together. All right. Thanks.
And now, we're on 19.
The order that you have in front of you is for $2.5 million authorization for the repair and construction of sidewalks and maybe roads in the city.
Good evening, councilors. As discussed briefly, excuse me, at the subcommittee meeting earlier today, $2.5 million is be providing to the DPW for sidewalk construction throughout the city. At this point, the primary goal of these funds are for sidewalks. It costs us about $5,500 per location in the city, so we are looking at about 450 locations throughout the city. Locations will be across the city, not just in certain neighborhoods. Primary locations will be where we have had to do asphalt repairs over the last year or two, and then go to the application list that we have in the city and going oldest first. We will be focusing on multiple locations, not just picking one property, but wanting to do two or three at a time. Bid documents would be developed over the winter for bid for our construction start April 1st. The only caveat of locations that we wouldn't be doing are locations in the next year or two where we'll be doing roadway reconstruction or paving. That would be taken care of as part of the funds provided by the state for paving within the city. Does any of the councilors have any questions?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. President?
Counselor Twigs?
As we discussed in committee, can you give us a list of those locations?
We don't have a list right now. I would have a list available in the beginning of December.
That's good enough for me.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, just a quick question. You said that priority goes to some of the older sidewalks, or that's...
The older applications that people have submitted over the years. Some of them are 10 years old that we, since we've had, haven't had a program, we go back to that application list.
Are there any additional considerations for maybe those who are of an older age or handicapped or in terms of priority listing?
The, a lot of those people would fall under the areas where we've done temporary work because those are the people that have been calling. So one of the priorities that we're going to first are locations where we've done temporary repairs, where we've done asphalt repairs, et cetera. So those, those people that have had complaints over the last year or two where we've gone and done temporary work, that would be the highest priority of where we would be going back to for complete replacements.
All right, thank you.
And that, one of the things that I would say is that we are not doing a slab or two. We would be doing an entire property.
Any other questions from the council? All in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
On authorizing the bond, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
Thank you, councilors.
You have another one, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Ask him, can you bring that one? You know I know.
Took all the other departments first, that's okay, I'll be fine.
The next item is item 20, a bond authorization for citywide vehicles and equipment in the amount of $2,750,162.
Good evening, councilors. The DPW is in charge of all city vehicles with the exception of police and fire. This order in front of you tonight represents heavy equipment. We did not purchase any vehicles in the year, in fiscal year 17. So this shows a purchase of vehicles that encompass fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18 for heavy-duty vehicles. These are 29 vehicles that are spread out between the school department, parks department, and the DPW within the city. It is the purchase of 29 vehicles. Just as an example for the Department of Public Works, we are talking about four to five dump trucks, three sweepers, loaders, backhoes, et cetera, in the city. These will be replacing vehicles that are, some of them are 25 to 30 years old.
Any questions? Counselor Twigs?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the director if, can he outline some of the equipment that's going to be bought? It's my understanding you're going to get a couple of new street sweepers and... Can you talk to us about that?
Absolutely. From the DPW perspective, three new street sweepers. We have four right now in the city. Two of them have been completely inoperable all year. So we want to get three to get back up to four. Two front-end loaders. One of the front-end loaders will be equipped with a large-scale snow blower. So we would be able to do major streets, especially overnight, to widen them curb-to-curb. Backhoe, five dump trucks, a tractor boom mower, which will allow us to do road sides in the city. We do not have that ability right now. And four plows for, that are actually replacing three, two of them from 1975 and one from 1995. These are actual the plows that go on the front of the equipment. For the park department, a lot of trailers for their equipment, replacing a lot of the older trailers that need to be replaced. Large-scale leaf blowers, wood chippers, et cetera.
Any other questions from the council?
Well, I think it's going to be good, Mr. President, if we can sweep these streets about more regularly. You know, I'm sure we're doing a lot of this because of the casino, but still, I want to see this department operate effectively. And the director has indicated that, that he would be in a better position to do such. So I would urge the passage of this.
All in favor of suspension for Rule 19, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
On approving the bond, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Shay, absent. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams, absent. Counselor Ramos?
Yes. More than sufficient, order is approved.
The next item is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of Northside Crosby Street.
Counselor Allen?
I don't, I'm not surprised to speak to this issue. I want to just make a point.
Michael. I'm looking for some people to sign on with me at this. I don't know, I want to introduce a...
I just want, I just want to make a point that I'm... Counselor Twigs, please. I want to make a point, this is important, it's on the vote we had a couple of minutes ago. I had done become ever having a vote as a council in which seven votes was required to pass. I don't make a question publicly, but I've never heard a majority of the people present. Maybe it is, but I don't think I, I can ever remember a vote. I believe that committee vote was five to three or something. Six to six to three. And every, my experience is that you need seven votes, just like you need nine votes to pass a financial thing. You need seven votes to pass any other normal thing. I don't believe we had seven votes and I'm questioning whether that was really the right voting.
Counselor Allen, you are correct. I actually spoke with Counselor Fenton and the President about this issue shortly. There were six votes for sending the item to committee. So it didn't pass, the vote for, to send it to committee. I spoke with the President. I believe that we're going to readdress this issue at the end of the, or that the item will come back at the end of the regular agenda. Correct.
Thank you.
We are on item number 22.
Good evening. Jalisa Dabla Ramos from the Office of Housing, here to talk about Northside... Oh. Okay, sorry. Here to talk about Northside Crosby Street Parcel 38. This is a 2,428-square-foot lot in the six-quarters neighborhood of the city. The city's owned it since 2014. The abutter intends to use it as a side yard.
Any questions from the council?
Has it been through the, it's a 2,400 square foot lot, so it's not a buildable lot?
Okay. Well, you didn't say that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? All in favor of suspending Rule 19 say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Roll call.
On approving the count, the transfer, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook. Absent, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Absent, Counselor Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea. Absent, Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Absent, Counselor Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient. Order is approved.
Thank you.
The next item is a zone change for the property at Eastside Thompson Street from Residence B to Business A. This item is on for first reading and referral to the planning committee. There is no action, there is no action required.
Item number 23, Mr. Clerk.
Oh, geez. Item number 23 is an order amending Chapter 322, the throwing snow and ice into the street ordinance.
Thank you for trying to skip me. I appreciate it. Good evening, councilors. As a follow-up to what was in front of the council a few months ago discussing fines, one of the items that we started to go through at the DPW was just modifying the ordinance about throwing snow into the street. And as was discussed at the meeting, what the DPW is not looking to do is get homeowners who are using snow blowers or shovels, but what we are looking for are major commercial developments in the city. State Street, Page Boulevard, Boston Road, et cetera, to better define the ordinance of, and fines associated with plowing snow or throwing snow back into the street. The ordinance is basically looking for a better definition of what the description is, and going to a fine structure of $100 for a first offense, $200 for a second offense, and $300 for a third offense in a given fiscal year. The fines will be able to be issued, as fines are issued, through Building Department, et cetera, the way that their process is used right now. So at this point, it's a modification of the ordinance, so it requires three votes, correct, Anthony? Correct.
Counselor Fenton.
Mr. President, I rise to support this, but I also want to thank Mr. Signoli for being with us here since 5:00. We've had a lot of committee meetings, and I appreciate his commitment.
We can vote a raise at the same time if you would like to counsel there. I very much appreciate that.
Counselor Walsh.
Mr. President, I want to be clear what you mean about throwing the snow and ice into the street.
You mean, you mean people that, I don't know what you mean by that.
Giving your sidewalk is pouring into the street.
Pardon me?
Giving your sidewalk is pouring into the street.
The, the major problem, I just wanted to find the exact terminology that we were looking for. One of the major problems that we have is basically plow operators up and down, Boston Road is probably the best example, who basically just take the entire lot and plow it into the street. And we have either not plowed the street yet, or if we have, we then get a phone call that says, "You didn't plow Boston Road," and we go out there and there's giant piles. One of the major offenders is falsetti music. They basically plow their entire lot into Boston Road. So we go out there and we have to move it again. And a lot of commercial developments, we had problems on Sumner Avenue. The Diamond Gold Exchange basically plows everything right into the street, and they feather it out, so it doesn't look like anything, but all of a sudden, there's six inches of snow in the street. Right now, what we, what we used to have to do was contact the police. The ordinance, there was an ordinance on, but there really wasn't a fine structure associated with it. And what we end up having to do is going out at a later time to send vehicles back out on a complaint, by complaint basis. And if we don't get out there, it freezes, it becomes a hazard, and that's where we get the phone calls that says, "You didn't plow, plow our street," or "Plow our area." So what we're trying to do is part of our inspectors to be out there, to get this, be able to photograph it, contact the property owners, and inform them of the, of the hazard that's being done out there.
Well, I've seen a lot of residents who put their snow in the street, so that, so that means they'd get a $100 fine if there was snow in front of their house?
As I mentioned in the committee meeting, I'm not really interested in the resident who's, you know, using their snow blower and happens to kind of throw it towards the street. What we are really going after are the commercial properties. And there are some residents who also hire plow.
Yeah.
And basically, what they do is they just plow it out into the street. So that's what we're really trying to go after, because what happens is that when they plow it across the street, as they do, all of a sudden, the other side of the street is out two and a half feet now, and we can't move it. It's frozen, and we've already done the street. So what we're really trying to do is that we then get a complaint from the homeowner across the street that says, "You've plowed it." So when we go and try and push it, we then have to plow it, and we kind of put snow back in the driveway. So it becomes a, an issue that we've had problems with in the past, and we want to be able to assist the police in making sure that the, as I said, I'm, I'm mostly worried about the, or the commercial properties in the city. Residences are not going to be our major scope unless they become a major problem in an area.
But, I mean, if it's a law, it's on the books, and anybody can complain. Is there a early warning system with this? Like if you, do you get a warning the first time, or you?
That's what we, that's over the past couple of years is what we've tried to do to these locations. And usually, the early warning is that when we get the plow guy out there, and we flag him down and say, you know, "You better go clean this up. You got an hour to clean it up, or you're going to be getting a fine." So we usually get out there at that point and be able to get the plow operators. One of the things that we find in Springfield is that a plow operator usually does two or three or four properties adjacent to each other.
True.
So usually, we're out there catching them and working with them to get it cleaned up. It's really the chronic ones that we're after, because when we, when we go out there, it's just, we then have to go out there the next day with a loader to be able to move it. So it's costing us a lot of money and a lot of time.
And there are two other votes after this, correct? Because I'm, I'm not comfortable with the fines. I don't, I, I think what you're doing is a good idea, but...
Yes, yeah, there's, correct. There's two others, yes.
I'm not comfortable with the fines.
I actually wanted them higher.
You what?
Yeah.
Counselor Gomez.
So, my question is, because I guess I have, we've had this conversation about, what about if they move the snow to the other side of the street? Is that going to be considered?
Yes.
As throwing it into the street?
Yes.
And do we have a way that we can prove that they did so?
That's what we have to do. That's why our inspectors are out there. If we can't prove it, I can't find it. We have to be able to prove it. We have, our, our goal is to have photographic evidence that it's being done.
So, I believe that in Section A, and we can work this out after, it should have an amendment saying, if you even move your snow across the street and be specific, instead of just saying "into the road," because obviously, we have shared a communication where somebody has moved their snow from their, their kind of area and pushed it against, because, you know, some, some people's streets, they don't have sidewalks, and it's just a big bend, and they just push it on the opposite side. I think that in Section A, I don't know where, but we, we, somebody should take a look at it before we take our second and third and finalize it, to address that moving even the snow from your parcel to another parcel is an issue also. So then we can be clear when we want to hold some of these individuals accountable. Also, I think we should just do away with kind of warnings. I think it's, it, it sends a, a message that, once they, they get their fine the first time, that they're going, they're not going to do it again, because we've been, honestly, when it comes to accountability, we've been slapping people on the wrist left and right. And I personally, so we can, if they, they can hold us accountable, then we need to start holding our constituents a little bit accountable when it comes to this problem. I think it's important, and it shows character, that we mean business, and that we need to start having to change the structure, because if we're going to be enforcing these ordinances and applying them, we need to start doing that with all of the laws within our municipality. But I think that's about it. I appreciate it. So if we can get that changed a little in the language on Section A, then I, I'd be comfortable with it. But I think we need to do away with even proposing this, or talking about it, that we're going to give warnings, because we're not. And that's what it is. Thank you.
Just so the council's aware, the item is before the body, so if the body wants to make changes, the council would make them now, or after the, or at, or prior to the final two votes?
Well, we could do, we could do a committee meeting on it.
I, I just feel comfortable, because honestly, it's later, and I'm not going to pick this apart, because I picked everything else apart, to be honest. And I really would like to look at this carefully, because I haven't got the chance. So on our second round, I'll, I'll make the amendment.
So, would it be appropriate to have a committee meeting on this? Because it's a referral to the Committee on Ordinances.
It's, yeah, it's going to go to a first step. In the time between now and when it'll appear at the, I believe it's the December 3rd meeting, any committee can meet on the ordinance.
Okay.
I will hold another committee meeting.
Thank you.
Counselor Williams.
Just maybe a la, a last consideration to maybe delineate the fee for commercial, I guess, like, you know, snow child, snow plow trucks, as well as maybe, I don't know how you would tell the difference, but also between that and residence, because what I fear is someone like Counselor Walsh, who has a sheer driveway, you know, if there's an excess amount of snow, then she's going to get the penalty, and be back here complaining to you.
I do not want to be...
Oh, that would never happen, though.
I do not want to be the poster child to the fine.
That's something to consider, but thank you.
That's what happens when I'm last, you know?
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? All right, seeing none. All in favor of first step, assigning the item to Committee on Ordinances? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
The last item on tonight's agenda is to readdress item number 18, the bond authorization for Riverfront Park, for Riverfront Park redevelopment in the amount of $1.6 million. This item, there was a motion to send the item to committee by Counselor, excuse me, by Counselor Ramos, seconded by Counselor Gomez. The item got six, the motion to committee got six votes in favor. Erroniously, the council was informed that six votes were required. Under the rules, there's a seven-vote requirement to send this item to committee. So it's still before the body for this meeting, and the motion to committee has failed, and the council can now vote the item up or down.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, I, I don't, I don't mean to be difficult. I'm not, I'm not intentionally trying to be difficult. I spoke my piece. I told you how I feel about the item. I told you what my concerns were, and I told you which way I'm going to vote. I'm not going to vote in favor of this tonight. And so, the council, my colleagues, were left with two options. We either send this item to committee, or it's not going to pass. Basically, those are the two options that we're left with. You know, I've never, for the record, I've never publicly criticized anyone on this body for voting a certain way. Everyone has a right to vote however they feel. Whether you want to vote on the other side, on the opposite side of which way I'm, I'm voting, it doesn't matter. We all have that right to vote however we feel. We're elected to be the voice of the people who we represent, right? And so we all have the right to vote however we want. And I don't appreciate anyone trying to intentionally put me in a position where I'm required or forced to vote a certain way. I just said which way I'm going to vote. I'm not going to vote for this tonight. And so again, I'm hopeful that now, that the, that the first motion to committee failed, I'm hopeful my colleagues will reconsider. Pat isn't even here anymore. We made the motion. I, I committed to put in this on the agenda for the 27th, and I'm going to make a motion again, Mr. President, to send this item to committee.
There's a motion on the floor that is seconded by Counselor Fenton. Is there any discussion on, on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
I have a point of information. If the motion to committee fails, and this comes up for a vote and it fails, does it qualify for immediate reconsideration at our next regular scheduled meeting?
This item would qualify for reconsideration.
It would.
Counselor...
It would.
Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Allen.
As the Ward 1 counselor, since we, we've been throwing that around, right? Since I represent Ward 1, and we represent the whole city as a whole, I'm not willing to risk $1.6 million for two weeks, and then it fails today, and then we have to reconsider it and wait till December. Riverfront Park is in Ward 1. All right? I'm asking you, please, I'm, I want to vote in favor of this, but if my colleague is going to put this project in jeopardy, and we can wait two weeks and be patient, and show that the city that we are patient, then we can move on and have a unanimous vote, a vote that is for the people, by the people. Everybody knows that this, at the end of the day, is something very, very special. Very special. And not all the time do we see on the same size. I understand being fiscally responsible is important. I differ in opinion with, with Mr. President. I wish that he wouldn't vote against it. But realistically, I don't believe that we should hold anybody hostage, or, because I've heard that term thrown around this year before. You know, and they, funny thing is that they tell me, "Counselor Gomez, you got us hostages. Look at all these people here." Which my intent is never to hold anybody hostage. I just want to be clear that I am totally in favor of this project, but I am not in favor of risking $1.6 million. If I can wait two weeks, I think we all can, and we can move on, and then we can talk about this after we're done tonight. You know, I, I just don't like the fact that it just looks like we're, we're, we're coming at each other in public, when it's something that, it's something really petty, that, it's serious, but, you know, the pettiness, it, it has to cease. This year is almost out. 2017, we're almost done. All of us are reelected. Let's move on. Let's get back to business. Mr. Twigs has said, let's do the right for the people. Honestly, I want to move on. I want this to go into today. But if we can't, if we got to wait two weeks, I'm with waiting two weeks. I sit on maintenance and development. Madam Chairman and I have coordinated a date. If it works out for everybody, that, everybody that cares and wants to vote for it or vote against it, please be at the subcommittee meeting so we can move forward and get this done. Thank you.
Are there any other councilors who wish to speak?
My, sorry, Counselor Edwards. I was just wondering, what are we, are we voting again on putting it in committee?
Yes.
I thought we already voted on that.
My understanding, and you can correct me, Mr. Clerk, that this is, this item has come up again, and we, we can entertain that motion again. Is that accurate?
That's, that's, the motion, the first motion to committee failed, so the item has still been before the, before the body to be acted upon. I just was reviewing the rules just to make sure this time. There's no prohibition against bringing a second motion to, motion to committee in the rules.
That's fine.
Are there any other councilors who wish to speak on this motion? Counselor Edwards.
Essentially, you said what I had to say, which is that I was concerned that this would fail. I would be happy to go on the record right at this moment and say, "I intend to vote for this to pass." I would vote for it to go to committee because of my concern that it may fail. And at this point, the, the project needs to go through, but I respect my colleagues' right to say no. And the simple common sense thing for me to suggest is that this body send this to committee, and regardless of how my colleague feels about it, and maybe his concerns are addressed in the future, but the three councilors that aren't here, this is a good example of why it's important that these people, or that we all be here when we can. I'll never question anybody's motives for not attending a council meeting, but this is why attendance matters, because sometimes the numbers do matter. And if you're sick, or if you've got a family emergency, that's one thing, but we're supposed to take this job very seriously, and we're supposed to be here, because this is the taxpayers' dollar that pays our salary, and we should be here for these meetings. So I'm just going to throw that out there, and it is important, because, and we have had an item that was very important, regardless of how I voted or you voted on an issue recently, that failed because we didn't have full attendance. And that's not an dispersion on why we didn't have attendance, but the fact that a matter of six to six vote did not work. So just want to remind people, the alternative is, is risk of failure. It would probably pass at reconciliation, but there's a chance that even at that, could be delayed even further. So what we're really talking about is two weeks, or risking that it'll pass in two weeks, and then, or, and still have to have a delay even further. So I just want to throw that out.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to state for the record that I also understand, and not necessarily understand, but our, our colleagues have the right to voice their no vote for any vote that we do, that we do hold. But I, I do want to say that moving forward, one of my constituents told me one day that, Marcus, you, they say that you are the Ward 5 City Counselor, but at the end of the day, you are a Springfield City Counselor, and that's first and foremost. And I just want that to be uttered in, in similar meetings that we might have of this nature, where we come to a point that we have to determine what projects to put forth for Ward compared to the city, and, or any mixture of the two. And I, I really feel that when we have sound projects that have the backing, that, that's external, that, that's not even really coming out of, or 50% is not coming out of our own pocket, that, that we have to look at the city sometimes at, as we all are Springfield City Councilors, before the wards that we do serve respectfully. So I just wanted to state that for the record, and I hope that moving forward, it, it does not become a further discussion about what's best for Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 1 through 8, instead of what's best for the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Are there any other councilors wishing to speak on this issue? Say again, are there any other councilors wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to send this to committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. I'm sorry, the voice, both, wait. Can we have a roll call? Mr. Clerk?
On the second motion to send this order to commit, to send this bond order to committee, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
No.
No. Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
No.
No. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash, absent. Counselor Twigs.
No.
No. Counselor Shea, absent. Counselor Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst. I'm sorry, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Bud Williams, absent. Counselor Hurst.
Yes. Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Mr. President, I ask for immediate reconsideration at the next regular meeting.
The motion to committee failed. The item is still before the body. The next step will be for the body to vote on the bond authorization, yea or nay.
Okay.
All those, being that this is a financial order, all those in favor of suspending Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On approving the bond order, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook, absent. Counselor Gomez.
Yes.